Good evening. Today is Monday, December 4th, 2023. I will now call the City Council Regular Meeting to order at 6:35 PM. Item number two is a roll call. We do have a quorum of council. Item number three is our pledge. It'll be led by Joey Johnson, Assistant Director of Public Works. Come on up, come on up. Come on up to the microphone.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Item number four are public comments. City Secretary, do we have any public comments?
No, Mr. Mayor, we do not.
Wow, okay. All right. Looking at 7:30? Item number five, consent agenda. I was looking back over there, but, all right. Item number five, consent agendas. Do we have any motion? We do have a motion by Councilmember Brown Marshall, second by Councilmember Klausert, seeing no one else on the queue. Let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. Item number six are public hearing and related actions. 6A is a zoning public hearing in ordinance.
6A is just a public hearing to receive comments for or against the permanent zoning of land within Sienna, Municipal Utility District Number Two, from SD Suburban District to SD Suburban District, R1 Single Family Residential District, R2 Single Family Residential District, R4 Patio Cluster Residential District, LCO Local Commercial Office District, and CF Community Facilities District, and to the extent such zoning deviates from the future land use and character map of a comprehensive plan to provide for an amendment therefrom.
Okay, thank you. We'll now go ahead and open the public hearing for item 6A1. City Secretary, do we have anyone, a request to speak on this?
No, Mr. Mayor, we do not.
Okay, there are no further comments. We'll close public hearing for 6A1. Item 6B1 is also a public hearing.
6B1 is a public hearing to receive comments on the Community Development Block Grant Comprehensive Annual Performance and Evaluation Report.
Okay, thank you. We'll now go ahead and open the public hearing for item 6B1. City Secretary, do we have any requests to speak on this item?
No, Mr. Mayor, we do not.
Okay, hearing no further comments. We'll now go ahead and close the public hearing meeting, 6B1. Item number seven are authorizations. 7A is consideration and possible action to authorize the city manager to execute the contract with Brooks Concrete Incorporated for sidewalks and street repair services in the amount not to exceed $5,493,706, proposed by presentation. Joey Johnson, Assistant Director of Public Works. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I am Joy Johnson, Assistant Public Works Director over Streets, Drainage, and Traffic Operations Maintenance. Today I'm here for your authorization to consider the award for sidewalk street repair contract for Brooks Concrete Inc. This was a collaborative approach involving purchasing parks and public works. To ensure to our residents that we're holding our contractors accountable for their work, we required a bid bond, a performance bond, and a payment bond to cover any damages and other payments that may be obtained during this contract. We will manage this contract by scheduling street repair locations based off of our pavement condition indicator scores and sidewalks per council district. Our funding sources for this contract will come from Metro, General Fund, and CIP for parks sidewalk repairs, which gives us an estimated funding cost of $5.5 million. We have a map here that shows, that, excuse me, that identifies our street repair locations, and it also gives the estimates per council district of the street repairs that we will be performing under this contract. We have a total estimated cost of $5.3 million for street rehabilitation, which includes panel replacement, asphalt overlay, and street lifting. Excuse me, pavement lifting, I'm on couch, street lifting. This contract, I mean, this map here shows our locations for our sidewalk repairs. It is showing our prioritized locations we have under this contract identified by our council districts with the approximate total estimate of $950,000. We identify our sidewalk locations by trip hazards, safety, bonding, ADA requirements, and the vicinity that they are to schools. And here we show the five locations for our parks project with an estimate of $700,000. There are five locations where they will be doing some sidewalk repair rehabilitation in Bicentennial Park, American Legion Park, Ridgeview Community, and East Hampton Parks. So our sidewalk and street repair work will begin January 2024. And since this is a one-vendor contract, as previous years we had multiple vendors, but since this is a one-vendor year contract, Brooks has committed that we'd have up to six crews that'll be performing street repairs and sidewalk repairs for both Public Works and Parks so that we can show a citywide effort of doing repairs in this contract. This concludes my presentation. Thank you, and do you have any questions?
All right, thank you so much. We do have some council members signed up, so let me start with Councilmember Klausert.
Hi, Joy. Is this your first time presenting for the council? You did a wonderful job.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You've got some fans.
So I see that this is a one-year contract with Brooks. Do they expect that the work will be done in one year?
Yes, we've estimated our locations for one year. So that's how much we've estimated to get done.
Okay, okay. And then, second, my question is around the 2021 bond. Are these repairs, will these fulfill the entire scope of work defined in the bond as it relates to the sidewalks and streets?
So the bond is for the capital projects, and only bond money for this contract will be under parks for their sidewalks?
Okay, okay. Okay, and that concludes my question.
All right, thank you. So, Joy, I do have some questions as well. So when we talk about the 5 point, almost 5.5, can you, I know that we have, the council had dedicated some money last year to getting sidewalks fixed. And I know that we hit on some certain streets and then we stopped at certain sections. So can you walk me through, where do you start with this if this is approved?
So we will start exactly where we finished. That is our priority to complete out that the location, I believe it was Hunter's Green subdivision. But, so, yeah, where we stopped is exactly where we're gonna start because we know we have some ongoing sidewalk and repairs that we need to do in that area.
Okay, so I have one more question. The map, can we go to that map?
Oh, sure. For the streets or sidewalks?
Street, right here, the sidewalks. Okay, so as we're now moving forward, we have the new contract. You're going, you're starting from the place where you stopped that, right? As new sidewalks or residents are pointing out new areas. So how does that equate into this map? Like, how do you get that in there to?
So this, the locations that we've identified is under the contract that we have. We have an ongoing list that we do take, and depending on the severity of the location, it may be bumped up, but we'll just keep adding our ongoing list so that next year we can address those different locations.
All right, I will yield back and recognizing Mayor Protim Emery.
Two questions. One, when we look at the street repair or the sidewalk repairs, well, both really, with our annexation of Sienna MUD 2, have we included dollars in there and locations that we're aware of that require funds to be applied and work to be completed?
We're doing an assessment now. We have a contractor that's assessing the streets as well as the sidewalks in that area. And once we get that data back, then those would be plugged in based on the severity or the deterioration of those streets and sidewalks.
Will that increase the amount that we're allocating for these two sidewalks and street repairs?
It could, possibly, and that's, if you recall, we set up the funds to be able to draw from if we needed additional sidewalks or sidewalks or street repairs due to deterioration or emergency situation. That's primarily why we set that specific fund up, just to address that.
Okay. Second question is, I see now that Brooks is going to commit six crews. Are we, are they confident that they can meet our schedule with the number of crews that they're bringing in? We're talking about a really wide swath of areas that, you know, that they're going to have to be involved in the activity. So, you know, are we confident that they can meet our timing requirements and priorities?
Yes, we've met with them, and they are currently here as well, if you'd like to speak with them as well. But they have committed to us because they understand that this is a one-year and that we really would like to see a very big difference in the repairs that we make. And they've done work for the city before. They've been around about 10 years doing work throughout the city and other cities, so they understand.
Well, at this point, I'm gonna take your word and their word to you that they can meet the priorities for the projects that we've got committed.
Okay, thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Riley.
Thank you, and great job. I have a couple of questions. The areas that are identified in the map, how were they, these particular ones designated? Is it based on age or is it based on reports of damage or what?
For the streets, it's based on age and our pavement indicator, which takes a consideration of the age of the streets and also the condition. So we use that to prioritize the streets. For the sidewalks, it's based off of severity and as they come in, and then we'll take all cumulative. We know that certain areas did have, well, will have more sidewalks than others because of the age, and we'll work on those first and prioritize per district. So we want to make sure that every district gets some of this contract work accomplished. And so that map will look a little better next year. Actually, no, I was about to say.
Okay, and then my next question is, the six crews, are they working all in one district at one time? Or are they gonna be spread out throughout the city simultaneously?
No, they will be spread out, and they will be doing both street and sidewalk. And so that's why we really wanted to make sure that this one contractor will be able to handle this city so that we can see work done in different districts.
So you said they're working on the streets and the sidewalks in that one area at the same time?
No, not necessarily in one area.
Oh, okay, because that was kind of concerning to me. Because we have a lot of people that do walk, and so if that's a street being repaired along with the sidewalk.
We'll make sure that that type of scheduling won't happen.
And this may not be a question you probably factored, but what type of signage are we putting out there to let those neighborhoods know what type of work is gonna be done? Construction, if they need to detour, things like that.
So when it comes to street repairs and traffic control, there will be proper traffic control signage. But as far as if they need prior notice, then we'll give prior notice, whether it's, I'll, you know, instruct it to be on our website or we'll give to residents. Especially when it's a sidewalk repair, we always go and contact directly the resident that could be impacted by that.
Yes, because I know in some of these areas, you have some, you know, senior citizens. And, you know, we don't want them to have any trip hazards or anything like that. Then my last question is, with the bond money, are any, I know you said that these are associated, the bond is associated with the capital improvement, but you mentioned that that was a part of the parks.
Yes, so.
Is that, is that, as related to streets?
No, it's not related to streets. It's just related to the park sidewalks.
The park sidewalks? Okay, okay. That was what my question was. So the money that was in the bond that's related to street repair, that has nothing to do with this, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Recognizing Councilmember Bonney.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank you for the presentation. It was excellent. I would just like to ask that you all provide us with two pieces of information moving forward. Because I know I oftentimes ask for it and I don't have, it's not readily available to me. But one being the firm that has graded our streets and our sidewalks, I'm sorry?
No, I was just saying.
You know, if you could provide us with the most recent report. I know you mentioned that there's one being done now, but until that one is completed or just every time, I think it's always good that we have an idea of how these streets and these sidewalks have been graded. Because I think sometimes when we see numbers like this or decisions made by Public Works, we don't know exactly, you know, why maybe certain districts may get more than others, which is the second piece of information I think that is important, report-wise. If we can get like maybe the last three to five years historical data of, you know, what we've spent year to year on the different districts for streets and sidewalks. I think those two pieces of information would be helpful.
Okay, we can get that to you.
Recognizing Councilmember Marulus.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Brooks for coming out tonight. It's a long time. I'll say thank you. You guys have done great work over the few years that I've been on council, and you guys do quality work. Continue to communicate with residents like Councilmember Riley mentioned. Sprinkler repairs often come up, and they don't know who to call. So maybe in our communication, if you have a problem, this is who you call because, you know, they'll still call everybody. The heat map for District C doesn't feel like $140,000. It looks like more. And I don't know if this is just kind of a different map or whatnot, but I feel like we could probably get $140,000 worth of sidewalks done in just the northern part of District C. So I don't know if that's an accurate heat map, but it doesn't feel equal to me.
So that is the older part of District C, and that's why that heat map, it's more, you have more locations in that part of the district.
So what we're saying is those are areas that have reports, and we're just going to try to overlap 140 on top of somewhere in C.
Of the locations that have been given, we've estimated it to be about 140.
So all that, that will be 140?
For sidewalks, yes.
I like Brooks better.
Recognizing Councilmember Brown Marshall.
Angel's, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to note that staff will be providing a list of all the streets that are included in here in a separate document.
Councilmember Brown Marshall.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I too had kind of the same concern as Councilmember Marulus. It just seemed like it was so much, even over in District B, near the Independence Boulevard area. So the dollar value that's kind of tied over in District B, thank you, $676,000, seems to kind of match the heat map. But I guess I'll just have to assume that the ones over in District C may be a little smaller, though they're more spread out.
So when you have older areas, they tend to have trees. Trees tend to escalate your cost, so that could have been one of the factors as we estimate. But every area has its own special conditions. But the older areas, you're gonna have more locations.
Okay, I kind of wanted to go back to what Councilmember Riley was talking about a little bit earlier. I know that Shashi and I had talked about this before. Detour signage would help tremendously. I know we want to place them on our websites and different things like that, but oftentimes when you're just trying to get somewhere and you're in the midst of it, honestly, some detour signs would really, really help. But we could have those, especially when streets are totally damaged. People always don't know which way to go, and they're just trying to figure it out. So I encourage you, please, to have detour signage. And to explain to me why we can't complete all of the work in one area first before we go somewhere else?
So that is, part of our project management plan is to do that, just that, to make sure that it can be a complete project, whether it's on a full street or not. But we will not be doing street and sidewalk at the same time just because of the inconveniences that it can cause, but, yeah.
So the six work crews, they could be in various parts of the city?
Yes.
But the idea is Crew A will complete, say if they're over up in, off of Independence, with such a high concentration area, is the goal to complete all $675,000 worth of work here before they move to somewhere else?
For sidewalks.
Okay, for sidewalks.
Yes, even with streets, yes.
Okay, okay, that's more than fair. My last question, and pardon me because maybe this is just ignorance on my part. This is all coming from General Fund money. Is this also bond money? Or is this is just pure General Fund money and funds that we received from Metro?
But, yes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I just have not really a question, just a comment, piggybacking off of some of the things that you heard. We got to do a better job of letting our citizens know. When I say that is, you know, we have Communication Department that puts it on the social media platforms, that we have now strategically put these digital signs elsewhere and to detour signs, you know, so we have to let them know. And then, you know, it would be nice to see that if, on a social media platform from the city, that we can say that, starting March 18th, you know, we're starting at Hunter's Glen, you know, neighborhoods. Not going into the streets per se, but at least people have an idea of what's happening. The last thing that you want is you just see some, you know, you go to work and you come back. You have sidewalks ripped off and, you know, somebody's sprinkler is broken, there's water everywhere. That's just not, to me, is not managing our work properly. And I'm not saying that this takes place all the time, but this is what, something that our residents have told us, our HOA representatives, you know, when we do all HOA. So these are mutually things that they talked about. It's not that getting the work done is an issue, but we got to find a way to manage this with proper communication, with, whether it's education or at least even for future so they know what's coming, so they can plan things better. So that's just my comment, and I yield back. I see Mayor Protim Emery.
Yeah, well, I think one of the items that was brought up was the communications, making sure that our residents know when work is gonna be done. And secondly, that we don't fall into the same trap that we have fallen into with the work that's being done by some of our cable carriers and where we're cutting, where they're cutting, you know, water lines, gas lines, whatever. Now, we can always say, well, that's somebody else, but this is Missouri City. So if we have problems with cutting lines or things of that nature, it falls back on us because this is our project. This isn't something that's being done by one of the other carriers. So I'd only try to reinforce the idea that we really have to do a good job of communicating, and we need to make sure that whatever markings are necessary to identify where water lines are and pipe, you know, and gas lines are, that that's taken into account to help Brooks do their job and do it expeditiously. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I don't see anyone else on the queue. We have a motion by Councilmember Marulus, seconded by Councilmember Riley. Let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you, Joy. Item number eight are appointments. 8A, consideration and possible action to appoint a member to the Board of Directors of the Fort Ben Subsidence District Board for a two-year term beginning on February 1st, 2024, and ending on January 31st, 2026. Crystal Rome.
William P. Wallace has served on this board representing the city since 1995, and he is the current secretary for this board. I believe Mr. Wallace is in the audience, if you have any questions for him.
Thank you. I placed myself on the queue. Just wanted to say it's finally good to meet you. Thank you for your years of services, and thank you for coming tonight. It's very important to me as I vote for these things that at least I get to see who I'm voting for. So thank you so much for coming, all right? Recognizing Councilmember Klausert.
Yes, Mr. Wallace, why don't you come up? You came all the way here. You've been serving since 95. You've been serving us since 95. Tell us a little bit about this board, what you do, and why you have a desire to continue to serve.
That was easy. You know, when I was appointed to this board, it was, subsidence was not something that I was totally familiar with. I am not a geologist, a engineer, or anything of that nature, but it has been a great learning experience, one. Two, understanding the cost ramifications, not only to the city, but to the county as well as our residents, of which I am one in paying that cost. It was extremely important to be engaged, and I've enjoyed being engaged in that process. The other thing that has been important to me is that the city has stood up and supported this district in making sure that it was in compliance with and supporting the initiatives that were set by the district with the whole goal of minimizing subsidence, which has major impacts not only on the roads and streets and the things that you heard about this evening, but also in terms of residents, in terms of how that impacts the compassionate soil on the various structures in the city. Happily, this district is represented by all the major cities, the Fort Ben County Commissioners Court, as well as the Council of Mayors and Cities. So it's well-represented. The impact is significant across not only Missouri City, but Fort Ben County. And personally, I'd like to thank you all for your support and the historical port of the past mayors and council members to focus on this initiative and support as well as staff, and thanks to his group for their assistance and engagement as well. So it's just, it's an important matter from a flooding standpoint and something that I take very seriously in terms of my initiative and how I represent the city. City first, and then Fort Ben County second, but it's just an important matter to me.
Thank you so much. You got my vote.
Thank you. Recognizing Councilmember Bonney.
Thank you so much for being here, Mr. Wallace. You know, I've had the pleasure of meeting you. There's been a lot of discussion surrounding, you know, Fort Ben as a whole, the whole subsidence issue. I know in our meetings with the Fort Ben County Mayor and Council Association, there was a push to try to even determine whether this was still applicable to everyone in Fort Ben County. So I guess, I'm sure you've heard these discussions being on the board. If you could just give us a little bit of an idea of where the Subsidence District Board is on this issue?
Well, right now it's important because we are in the middle of doing a joint regulatory review survey. The study is currently, for the most part, near completion, and that study will basically do several things. It will tell us sort of what the subsidence rates have been around the county at this point in time. It will also, and it's driven by not only the growth in our citizenry across Fort Ben County and cities specifically, and that information ultimately, and we're modeling those data and statistics now to give us various scenarios. The outcome of that will, of course, be brought before the various constituents, including The outcome of that will, of course, be brought before the various constituents, including the various cities and whatnot, so that they will have their opportunity to have input in terms of those findings. The ultimate result of this will be, as some of you may already know, there is a conversion to 40% of groundwater usage, uh, currently in, in place, which is we moved from 2025 to 2027 to give the very, to complete the review and to give the constituents time to, in fact, understand and review for their in, for your input, uh, into that data. Uh, and then ultimately, the question then becomes, what will we modify? In terms of further reducing groundwater usage, understanding what the impact is on subsidence. Will we back off or will we just su- sustain our current focus and plan? Uh, I don't know if that answered totally your question, but, uh, that's where we are.
Somewhat, definitely. I, I look forward to the findings and then, uh, hopefully we can revisit and got to get an idea.
Of course.
And if you could just let When are you, when are you, when are you all's meetings?
We meet the fourth Wednesday of every month.
Okay.
Uh, obviously, we did not meet in November, we're going to meet in December, some because of the agenda was not significant. But up until November, typically, we will, we will always meet the fourth Wednesday of every month. And that is, in fact, uh, on our website and information is, uh, always put out there as well.
Thank you, sir.
But if the council needs any information, or if you would like to have someone, a group of us to come and make a presentation to you about the district and some of where we are at this point, uh, obviously, that's something that is doable as well, and we'll get staff and work with you on that.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome.
All right. Thank you. I see. We have a motion by Councilmember Boni, seconded by Councilmember Riley, seeing no one else on the queue. Let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And once again, thank you for your support, and I hope I represent you well. Uh, thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Uh, item number eight B. Consideration and possible action to appoint members to the Community Development Advisory Committee, position four and position five, for a term expiring June 30th, 2025. Crystal Row.
Um, Pearlie Byrd, um, for position four and Nettie Glaze for position five have stated that they wish to continue serving on this board. Um, we did receive four other applications, but those applicants did not, uh, meet the requirements for this, uh, for this board. We waited, um, to bring this appointment to City Council because, um, of the bylaw amendments that were recently passed by the council.
All right, thank you. Um, recognizing Councilmember Boni.
Um, Mayor, I just want to say, as a long-term member of the C D, uh, A C Committee and the current chair, uh, it is truly my honor to, uh, recommend, uh, our unanimous approval of Pearlie Byrd, who serves currently as our vice chair, and Nettie Glaze, uh, both of them serve faithfully and, uh, and are engaged and with distinction, so.
Good. Thank you. Uh, we have a motion by Councilmember Boni, seconded by Councilmember Riley, seeing no one else on the queue. Let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, thank you. Item number nine, our ordinances, nine A.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, amending the general budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2022, and ending September 30th, 2023. Transferring various appropriations among accounts, appropriating supplemental revenue to various fund accounts, authorizing the appropriate city officials to take steps necessary to accomplish such transfers, making certain findings, and containing certain provisions relating to the subject.
All right, thank you. Um, we have, uh, Bertha here. Bertha, do you have any comments?
Um, I do have a presentation, but we can't.
No, 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 no. We want you to have the presentation.
Okay. Um, good evening, Mayor and Council. So this is our cleanup budget amendment for FY 2023. For the general fund, we are increasing the revenue budget by 3.1 million to equal actual collections for property taxes, sales taxes, licenses and permits, inter-gov revenue, which is really the reimbursement for Sienna Fire Station, and of course, interest income. On the expense side, we are transferring 685,000 in salaries and benefits from non-departmental to the fire department in order to cover overtime, resulting from a shortage in staffing. So the net impact is zero. We're simply going from one department to another department. Net impact is 3.1 million in revenue. Estimated ending fund balance for the general fund, 34.4 million. Special revenue funds, I'm going to group this. Um, grant fund 230, the police department received the grant for $64,750 to provide first aid CPR training for students in law enforcement. Our opioid fund, 245, we are increasing revenue to account for the receipt of the first of three payments from the opioid settlement. This budget amendment is in the amount of 66,700. For our hot fund, which is the hotel, 255, we're increasing revenue by 135,000 to equal actual collections. For our TERS, one, two, and three combined, we're increasing revenue by 1.9 million to equal estimated collections for property taxes from Fort Bend County and for Sienna lid taxes for TERS three. Parkland zones, particularly number five and number 12, we are increasing revenue by 310,000 to equal actual collections for interest income. On the expense side, we have one item, grant fund 200, 230, we're increasing the federal grant expense by $2,235. That's to cover expenditures associated with first aid and CPR training. You will see on the 2024 budget amendment that we're actually budgeting the remaining balance from the grant. So our NPAC is an increase in revenue of 2.5 million and an increase in expense of 200, I'm sorry, $2,235. Our net impact is 2.5 million. The estimated ending fund balance for the funds that are impacted by this budget amendment totals 25.9 million. For the debt service fund, we're increasing property tax revenue of 252,000 to equal actual collections. We're increasing interest income in the amount of 258,000 to equal actual collections. The impact is an increase in revenue of 510,000. Our estimated ending fund balance is 6.1 million. For capital projects, as sales tax increase, so does the metro fund revenue. So this is an increase of 644,000 to equal estimated actual collections. We're also increasing interest income revenue of 40,000, once again, to equal actual collections. And in other miscellaneous revenue, we are increasing revenue by 290,000 to account for the reimbursement from TERS one for the costs associated with sidewalks and other infrastructure repairs. The general projects fund, 402, we're increasing the transfer in from, in this case, the fleet replacement fund of 286,641. And I would like to provide a deeper explanation on this particular transaction. Um, we had unspent bond proceeds from 2021 when we actually purchased a fire pumper for Fire Station Six. Now, for those bonds, we could only use the balance for a similar type project. So as you may recall, in January, you all approved the purchase of a water tanker truck. So that's a similar item. So we, in essence, took a portion of the purchase cost for the tanker, moved it onto the bond proceeds. And then we u- we're requesting to use the freed up balance in the general fund to complete the pavers project. Of course, we did get Bond Council approval to make the, um, shift of expenditures for the similar type item. Um, transportation drainage fund, 403, we're requesting an increase in interest income of 298,000 to equal actual collections. And then the bond proceeds, which are in funds 410 through 415, we're increasing interest income of approximately 1.2 million due to the growth in investment earnings. On the expense side, there's an increase in sidewalk repairs of 286,641, which is the explanation I just gave. And that's for the completion of the pavers project, um, in the front of City Hall. Impact, 2.8 million in revenue, 286,641 in expense for a net impact of 2.5 million. Our estimated ending fund balance for those funds, subject to this amendment, is 8 million dollars. LGC, we're increasing interest income, $15,000, and charges for services of 123,000. In expenditures, we are increasing expenditures for the grill for 138,000. The impact is 138,000 in revenue, 138,000 in expense, net impact of zero. Estimated ending fund balance, 253,289. Oh, sorry. That concludes the presentation of the FY 2023 budget amendment.
Thank you. Uh, recognizing Mayor Protim Emery.
Yes, uh, going back to one of the, uh, entries that, uh, was for, uh, overtime for the fire department.
Yes, sir.
Uh, it's my understanding that, uh, with year 24, we will have full complement. Is that right, Chief? So I just wanted to bring it out that, you know, that, uh, a lot of the hard work that we've been doing with our compensation has worked, and we're now to a point where, uh, we're, uh, fully staffed.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. That's correct. We're fully staffed now. As of, uh, a week
I just wanted to bring that up and also show that, that entry, uh, will not be duplicated in our budget year 2024.
Correct. Our conversation with the fire department, fully staffed. They expect the firemen to take on their four responsibilities around Christmas time.
Correct.
Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Riley.
Great presentation. Thank you, Bertha. Uh, my question is probably more so to Shashi about the pavers. Um, the completion of the pavers, is this going to complete the entire pathway of City Hall? Including the, um, the walk-ups as well?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, Councilmember, it'll complete the remaining section in front of City Hall.
So it's going to be all flat?
Yes, correct.
Thank you. My heels appreciate that. That's it, Shashi. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, recognizing Councilmember Boni.
Thank you, man. I just wanted to, uh, point out that, uh, myself, as well as my colleagues, uh, Councilmember Marulis and Ca- of Mayor Protim Emery, uh, the, this item as well as nine B, uh, did appear before our Finance and Services Committee, uh, before our council meetings began. Uh, and we, uh, thoroughly vetted this and, uh, we move for approval.
Thank you. Recognizing Councilmember Brown Marshall.
Thank you so much. I just have one inquiry in regards to the LGC. The increase in expenditures, uh, for the grill, the 138,000, is it just coincidental that, um, the expenditures happen to match the same income increase?
The same, I'm sorry, which, the same revenue entry?
Uh-huh, the same revenue.
Uh, we typically try to keep the budget balanced.
Okay, that's fair. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, I just place myself in not really a question. Want to take this opportunity to thank, uh, Councilmember Boni, Mayor Protim Emery, and Councilmember Marulis for this whole year, uh, where the, your finance, I mean, heading this, this is your, what, 30th year, chairing it? 30th year chairing it. Um, so there's just been great input. Bertha, I also want to take, thank you not only for your presentation, but actual the budget, the whole budget, the whole pro- uh, part of the budget. And I know if you had to deal with me, you'd do good, but no, I'm just kidding. Uh, City Manager Jones, great job in, in the whole process. I mean, as a resident, not sitting up here as a mayor, I think I'm very grateful for this budget and what you all put together for this year for our residents. Thank you so much.
Thank you. It was a team, a team project, leadership team, others. I just want to acknowledge them as well.
All right, thank you. Uh, we have a motion made by Councilmember Boni, seconded by Councilmember Brown Marshall, seeing no one else on the queue. Let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. Item nine B.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, amending the general budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2023, and ending September 30th, 2024. Transferring various appropriations among accounts, appropriating supplemental revenue to various fund accounts, authorizing the appropriate city officials to take steps necessary to accomplish such transfers, making certain findings and containing certain provisions relating to the subject.
All right, thank you. We have Bertha.
This one is much shorter. So this is our first amendment for 2024. We are transferring 569,000 from non-departmental into internal services for building, maintenance, and repairs for various buildings. This was included in the budget. Uh, we parked the money there until such time as we can set up project codes for each of our 21 buildings. The intent is to track cost by building. So the net impact on the budget is zero. For the general fund, we're estimating an ending fund balance of 37 million. For the special revenue funds, our police department received the grant in the amount of 35,970, and this is for, um, a purchase, the Bosch Retrieval System. So we're increasing revenue and expense in the grant fund. We're also increasing federal grant expense in the amount of 62,515, which is the balance of the grant that was awarded in 2023 for first aid and CPR training. So impact, 35,970 in revenue and 98,485 in expense for a net impact of 62,515 from fund balance. Our estimated ending fund balance, 33,005. This particular, um, item, we are establishing a revenue and expense budget of 1.9 million for Sienna Mud Number Two. The revenue consists of various user fees, such as sewer fees, water cells, ground pumpage fees, those are the high-ticket items. Expense consists of purchase of water, GRP pumpage fee expense, lift station maintenance, and contractual services. This is the estimated balanced budget, so the net impact is zero. And finally, um, solid waste, we are tracking solid waste for Sienna Mud Two, uh, separately from the operational budget. So we are establishing a revenue budget of 22,449 for franchise fees. Also, a revenue and expense budget of 448,980 for solid waste services. The impact is revenue of 471,429, expense 448,980, for a net impact of 22,449, which is also the estimated. is also the estimated ending fund balance. That concludes my presentation on the FY 2024 Budget Amendment.
All right. Thank you. We're recognizing Councilmember Boni.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to point out, and if you could just share with the community as well as my colleagues, one of the questions I asked was about the funds that we allotted for 2023's budget that have carried over into 2024's budget relative to two key programs that we've approved, the rest of Ron Incentive Program and the Facade Improvement Program.
Yes. The economic development budget of $1.5 million had approximately $1.2 million remaining. We set that money up in a project account so that we don't have to keep rebudgeting the balance every year. As a project, whatever available balance, that will roll forward year after year until all the funds are exhausted. You're welcome.
All right. I just place myself again on the queue just to say thank you. I have noticed a person that I think is important. You had talked about the maintenance in the, in the beginning of this presentation, right?
Yes.
So I, I just want to recognize Caesar, who's sitting in the back over there from our maintenance crew. He's always here, always helpful. I've never seen him stop, so thank you, Caesar. All right. We have a motion by Councilmember Boni, seconded by Councilmember Klausert, and we will go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 9C.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, amending Chapter 10 Animals, Chapter 14 Buildings and Building Regulations, Chapter 30 Environment, and Chapter 78 Solid Waste of the Missouri City Code, establishing minimum penalties for certain code violations, providing for repeal, providing a penalty, and providing for severability. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. There's no formal presentation for this item. This is the item that was provided to you all and presented at the last meeting that provides minimum fines for certain violations, including violations of Chapter 10, which relates to animals and dangerous dogs. This ordinance also expands the timeframe in which the city can charge higher minimum fines for subsequent and multiple violations. It expands that timeframe from 12 months to 24 months.
All right. Thank you. There's been a motion by Councilmember Klausert, seconded by Councilmember Riley. Seeing no one else on the queue, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right. Thank you. Item number 9D.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, amending Chapter 30 Environment of the Missouri City Code, amending regulations relating to the timing of city abatement for certain nuisances, repealing all other ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict here with, and providing for severability. This item, again, Mayor and members of council, is the ordinance that was presented at the last meeting. It simply changes the timeframe in which the city is allowed to provide for abatement. It changes that date from 10 days from the date of notice to seven days. That's the only change.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Brown Marshall, seconded by Councilmember Riley. Seeing no one else on the queue, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right. Thank you. Item 9E.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, amending Chapter 10 Animals of the Missouri City Code, amending regulations regarding the definition of a dangerous dog, insurance requirements for dangerous dogs, and nuisance animals, providing for repeal, providing a penalty, and providing for severability. This is the last of the three. This is the proposed ordinance that would change the definition of dangerous dogs to include dogs that harm other dogs. Additionally, this ordinance increases the insurance requirement for individuals who actually own or are found to own dangerous dogs from $100,000 to $500,000.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Klausert, seconded by Councilmember Riley. Seeing no one else on the queue, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right. Thank you. Item number 10, Resolutions 10A.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, selecting a representative and an alternate to the Houston-Galveston Area Council Technical Advisory Committee for 2024, providing for repeal and providing for severability.
Thank you. Crystal Roan.
Mayor, this resolution would appoint Marcus Snell as the representative and Joy Johnson as the alternate representative to the Transportation Advisory Committee.
Okay. Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilmember Brown Marshall, seconded by Councilmember Boni. Seeing no one else on the queue, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right. Thank you. Item 10B.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, selecting a representative and an alternate to the Houston-Galveston Area Council Transportation Policy Council for 2024, providing for repeal and providing for severability.
Thank you. Crystal Roan.
Mayor Council, this item would appoint Shashi Kumar as the representative and Marcus Snell as the alternate to serve on the Transportation Policy Council.
All right. Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Riley, seconded by Councilmember Marulis. Seeing no one else on the queue, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right. Thank you. Item number 11, our City Council Announcements. We will start off with our enlarged councilwoman.
Okay.
Sonia Brown Marshall.
Thank you so much, Mayor. It's really nice to see some of the requests finally come to fruition. The pavers, thank y'all. Thank you, thank you, thank you. We've been asking for that for a while. Same with sidewalks and streets. I want to send a special thanks to Baines Middle School for the invite to Sharon Career Day. Unfortunately, I couldn't make it. I couldn't hardly talk past coughing a ton of times, so I do look forward to getting there on next year. The Snow Fest Parade and Snow Fest activities were exceptional on this year. The layout was incredibly nice. The flow was really good. Had a great time. Grand Marshall, Texas A&amp;M superstar, Anais Smith and his family, what a wonderful, wonderful group of people, just, just an amazing group of people. Tree lighting was amazing. Donnie, you and your team did a fabulous job. So great show, great effort on y'all's part. We really do appreciate you. I'm happy to see that we're getting ready to have a Santa's Fire Ride, where we'll have Santa on Wheels that's going to present it by the Fire Department. I think that's really cool. It's neat, and I like that it's going to touch all quadrants of the city. So I encourage the citizens to watch on the social medias, to watch for the dates when they will be near your area. I just think that's a neat concept, and I'm really happy to see that that's, that's coming out. It's a great job, Chief. I'm gonna go quickly tonight, because I can barely get it out, but I did want to wish my first man, hi, honey. Happy 25th wedding anniversary. I'm done. Thank you.
All right. We're recognizing Councilmember, A Large Position Number Two, Lynn Klausert.
Yes. Happy anniversary to you all. What a great time we had at the, at the Snow Fest Parade and tree lighting. I want to thank our Parks and Recreation Department and DJ Donnie Hayes. He's got a new name. There you are. Stand up, Donnie. He, you are now official. It was a great time, and I also want to thank our Parks, I mean, our Public Works Department. They were, they were really the first responders. They set up everything. They were the last to leave. They were directing traffic. So I just want to say thank you to our Public Works Department. They are fantastic. The weather cooperated with us this year, and we just had a great time. I gotta catch up with your, your dance moves. For all of our small business owners in Missouri City, we will have our first holiday business mixer tomorrow, Johnny Tamales in Missouri City, from 6:30 to 8 o'clock. Our guest speaker will be former U of H coach and current owner-operator of Chick-fil-A Sienna Crossing to inspire and motivate our business owners. There will be prizes tomorrow, so please come in your ugly sweater and mix and mingle with other business owners in our great city. Yesterday, myself and fellow autism givers who lead Autism Caregivers Around the Bend, which is a support group based out of Missouri City, hosted our annual Christmas holiday event for families living with autism. We had over 25 families to join us, and I want to give a special shout out to Ms. Sue, who is the owner of Altitude Jump in Sugar Land, for always supporting families living with autism. You know, we live in a very inclusive community, and we can't forget that there are people and children and adults who can't enjoy traditional celebrations, and so I do my part to do what I can do in the community to make sure that we include other families. I want to thank Councilmember Boni for his work to champion the new traffic light at Fort Ben Tollway in Lake Olympia Parkway that went live last Monday. We've gotten great feedback from our neighbors, so thank you so much for championing that, that effort. And lastly, I want to say a happy birthday to my mother. Today is her birthday, so I want to say happy birthday to her, and a happy Founder's Day to the Ice Cold Brothers of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, especially to Andre Humphrey. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you.
I'm not gonna say nothing.
Recognizing Councilmember District A, Monica Riley.
Well, happy anniversary, family. I wanted to say congratulations to one of our newest businesses, Shave Joint Barber Shop. That was really wonderful. Now my husband has a new place to go get his haircut, and, and I love the banana pudding. So I don't know, it was not just mine, but it was close. And I also want to say thank you to Baines Middle School for the invitation to come out and do Career Day. I had no idea which career I was going to pick to talk about, so I just talked the bottom out. But they had a great group of kids, very tough questions, and so I'm just really glad to see that a friend of mine, a long time friend, Elizabeth Williams, is the four-year principal over there. So great job, Elizabeth. Had an opportunity to stop by one of our newest soft-opening businesses on Texas Parkway, Snow Dreams. So I really want to encourage everyone to get out there. They are open for business, 11 to 7. They're right two doors down from the Shipley's Donuts on Texas Parkway called Snow Dreams. It's where you'll see the Sugar Rush sign, but it's actually Snow Dreams. They do snow cones with occasion twists, funnel cakes, and nachos, and frito pies, and pickles, all that fun carnival food, and bootin' as well. So please stop by and support them. Also want to say thank you to Boogie's for doing their car show, their annual car show that helps raise toy drive, bringing toys and awareness in the community. So thank you so much to Boogie's. Also want to say congratulations to two District A residents who received their Presidential Lifetime Achievement Awards over the weekend, that I had the pleasure of sitting at their table coincidentally, Mr. Larry Blackman and former Commissioner Rodney Griffin. So congratulations to you guys. Y'all are representing our community well. And then I also want to say thank you to Donnie, Danielle, the Parks Department, everybody. Donnie, you overdid yourself, and with your team and your staff, you guys did a phenomenal job, so you should really feel proud of being A number one on doing your first Snow Fest in Missouri City. I know you, you felt like you were still in Alaska, but you know, but you tried to bring the feel back, but I definitely want to tell you that the bubbles were my absolute favorite. I couldn't get enough of them, especially when they were all in my camera as well. So please bring that back. And then thank you so much to our Police Department, Officer Landry, who my daughter loves, Max. Max is the dog. And then our Fire Department, having the trucks out there, and the whole cleanup crew, our Public Works. And thank you to Finance for making sure we had money to pay for all of this. But that concludes my, my, my discussion, and thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Recognizing Councilmember District B, Jeffrey Boni.
Thank you, Mayor. I truly hope everybody had a wonderful Thanksgiving celebration with family and friends, loved ones. I do want to wish the brothers of Alpha Phi Alpha a 117th Anniversary Founder's Day on today. Being a part of the Divine Nine is a special thing, and so, you know, sometimes I have to give deference, at least for one day, or at least during my closing comments here. But, you know, there's so many members of this great fraternity that are representative. We have our own Commissioner Grady Prestige. We have Ron Reynolds, State Representative. We have, of course, Boris Miles, our State Senator, Congressman Al Green, and of course, Houston Mayor Turner, and many, many more of my friends and colleagues. So happy Founder's Day to you gentlemen. That's all you getting from me now, I'm just saying. And it's on camera, so you know, at least I do want to also thank the Parks Department and all the other departments, Crystal Roan and City Secretary's Office for making sure we had an outstanding Snow Fest Parade Festival and Tree Lighting Ceremony, event with the fireworks. You all did an excellent job, so thank you so much. We ran out of candy, or almost ran out of candy, and Crystal came through in the clutch, so thank you so much. Now, I will tell y'all, I'm trying to be brief on this. I made the, I don't want to call it a mistake, but I got into the golf cart with Councilwoman Klausert, trying to get back to where we originally parked, and let me just tell you. I'm glad we got insurance, you know what I'm saying? Because I mean, I think I may have to file a claim with the driving that she did, trying to get us back across 1092 and cartwright in a golf cart after the parade ended. But you did a great job, Councilwoman. It was fun, to say the, say the least. I attended a HGAC Finance and Budget Meeting as well as our monthly board meeting. Also had the great privilege of attending a meet and greet to welcome my first female Vice President Kamala Harris to the Greater Houston area on last week. Also, we had a meeting with the Draper Track, you know, brokers that took place along with our ED Director Herman and Public Works Director Shashi to discuss future opportunities for their area. I've had the pleasure of working with Logan Havel, who is the broker with Reed King, who represents that area since 2018, and I'm really encouraged about that meeting and the possibilities in the area. Lastly, this past Thursday, I was both excited and humbled to have been appointed by the National League of Cities President David Sander to serve as Vice Chair of the 2024 Community and Economic Development Federal Advocacy Committee, which is one of the most influential committees in NLC. It's focused on developing and influencing federal policy and leading NLC's advocacy on issues including housing, community and economic development, land use, recreation and parks, historic preservation, international competitiveness and federal grant programs that support these activities like CDBG. So again, I'm deeply humbled and honored to have been selected for this prestigious appointment. Thank you so much, colleagues, for your support in these endeavors as well.
All right. Thank you. Recognizing District C Councilmember Anthony Merlos.
Yeah, thank you, everyone, for everything you did to make the Snow Fest event successful. A lot of hard work, a lot of departments, a lot of long hours that go into it. We sit back and enjoy it, but you guys put it in the grind, and I appreciate that. I know we all appreciate that. The event got a lot of press. Donnie was on Channel 2. I know Anais posted on his socials, and he got a lot of press on that. It put the City of Missouri City on the map again. It put it in a positive press around family and fun and activities for our community, and I can't say enough for what we do for this community. So thank you. It was also the first time I have a City Secretary on the float, which was super cool. Jerel, man, you did so great for us. Thank you for all the effort you put into, to the parade, police, fire. It was like a Together We Excel Parade. It was the first time that I've seen it, and I appreciate that, and that's what culture we have here, the culture we want to drive. Finally, Chief, I know Sonia Brown Marshall brought it up, loved the fire, sent the fire ride. I look forward to seeing some great pictures and some happy kids. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Recognizing Councilmember District D and Mayor Protim Floyd Emery.
Well, I just want to echo all of the kudos that have been given out to our Parks and Public Works, City Secretary, our Public Safety folks, everyone that was involved in the, the Snow Fest. It was one of the better ones that I've been involved with. I was even able to get up on the float by myself this time, didn't have any, any knee issues. I, I did get a little apprehensive when we started running out of candy, but we had our City Secretary, Crystal Roan, and came to our, our relief to provide something for us. And just one thing, the Grand Marshall and his family are real attributes to Missouri City. They're a family we can all be proud of, and that young man has obviously got a, a large future in front of him, so it was really great to see him out there and his family to celebrate with us. I, last Monday, I looked for Councilmember Boni, but I couldn't find him. We were getting ready to do, to tear down that ugly wall, and I know that he was always wanting to be, you know, around when we did teardowns, but I couldn't find him, so we went ahead and did it anyway. So we, it was done within, I think, a day and a half or two days, which was more than, quicker than we had thought. So stay tuned for the next phase, which is going to be the, the building of the, the berms and the landscaping that will not only provide safety to the people on and cars on, on Cartwright, but also will, really opens up, you know, our signature hole in Quail Valley number 15, where you can really see it, and you know why we're all proud of our golf course at, at Quail Valley. And the other item was, we, I think we did pack the squad car and the fire truck. That, that went over really well. So again, thanks to the police and the fire for their, their help, well, not only their help, but their direction of that. With that, I've got 18 seconds.
I'll take them.
Then I'm going to leave, excuse me, 15 to the mayor.
All right, thank you, thank you. Well, I echo the same thing that everyone's been talking about. It wouldn't be fair that if I kept saying the same thing, but there are a couple of things. Donnie, you know, your entire department, Communication Department, we have Parks Department, Public Works, NYC, to the volunteers, to all those that was there to support the, the whole parade, the 40th Snow Fest Parade, thank you from my bottom, bottom of my heart. And then also the tree lighting, it was spectacular. Each year, I find that we're growing as a city, a lot more people coming out, which is a great event, great, great job. So we had our city, city manager light the tree this year, which was great. Let me also thank Councilmember Marulis for connecting Anias Smith, who's grown up in Missouri City, and still lives in Missouri City, his parents, and for making that Grand Marshall, that, you know, he was so excited, like, as, as you said, he's got a future ahead of him. His families wanted to thank every member of City Council, and they were just touched by the parade and by also being part of the celebration for during, especially during this 40th, and giving an opportunity to someone such as him to have that. We have several superstars in our community. I can't say enough about those that we didn't invite before, but I can only speak about what's coming in the future, so we look forward to it. If you have someone that you know, please let us know, so this way we can recognize them as well. Lastly, and of course, Double Dave's Pizza did a special for Anias Smith, creating a pizza called Sub Zero in, in honor of him. So if you do go to our Double Dave's in Missouri City, ask for a Sub Zero special, and you'll get that package as well, so which was another great thing. For me, I'm going to take a, a couple of more minutes from everyone's time. It's important, I think, a year ago today, a year ago tomorrow, December 5th, we, we had the opportunity to have our city manager, Angel Jones, start her career here with City Missouri City. Not sure, not knowing how it was going to turn out, not sure that if she was going to find this place to be comfort, not sure that if we were going to find her to be in this position for the future hall. But as a mayor of this city, I'm going to take this liberty to say that I have been extremely proud of the results that we have gotten so far to where we are at. And I know that my colleagues feel the same way. I'm going to give everybody another opportunity if they want to say something further about it. But Angel, I think as the state of the city, as you said, you are definitely an angel to City Missouri City. Continue to do what you have been doing, and as I've said it to you earlier in the past, no matter how hard I push, or any council members push, because we, you have seven bosses, always, always, always do the right thing. With that, I end my comment. I open it up to anybody else one more time. All right.
Let's go eat some cake.
All right, so we will now, item number 12, we do have an executive session item.
Can I just say one thing, Mayor?
Yeah.
Thank you for your stability. Thank you for bringing stability to Missouri City, because we really needed you, and I'm, I'm sure our staff, you know, y'all supposed to say yes, feels the same way as I do. Anyway, thank you.
All right. Well, city manager, I guess this, I've never done this, your opportunity to say something if you want to the residents and, and to your staff. Put it on the spot.
You know he always does that.
Yeah, exactly. I just wanted to take an opportunity to say thank you for welcoming me into this organization. The staff has, has been phenomenal in terms of helping me to understand the culture of Missouri City, and, and there's a push on them, many, many, many changes. They have responded every time willingly, and, and gone above and beyond in trying to ensure that we're moving the city forward. So thanks to each of you for, for having confidence and trusting me to get it done. Thanks to the residents for, for welcoming me and inviting me to, to various activities, meetings, events, and I'm just looking forward to all the progress that we can continue to make as a team, so together we excel.
Oh, love it, love it, love it. By the way, that was not practiced. I put her on the spot, Councilmember Boni, you know that.
Remember when she said, she came on board and she said, "I am not a public speaker." It's your one-year anniversary, look at, look, we made you a speaker.
Yeah, there it is. All right, the time is 7:52 PM, and the City Council will now go into a closed executive session pursuant to Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code.
We're going to reconvene into the special session and consider any action, if any, on items discussed in executive session. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mayor Protem, I have a motion. The machine is not working, so I'll make a verbal motion. I'd like to make a motion to move item 5A to our next meeting. Oh, there we go.
Okay, do we have a second on that? Any questions? With that, let's, let's vote. Let's do, yeah.
Yes.
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 Before we adjourn, let me just make a comment that the mayor had an emergency situation that he had to get to, family situation, so he wasn't able to stay around to close out the meetings, so just to know. Oh, and Council Lady Riley also had an emergency, so she wasn't here for our final vote, but just so we're on record, this is why the mayor had to, to exit quickly.
Mayor Protem, can I just say that this is a very important item to all of us, so we definitely hope to, we're going to take care of this next, next meeting.
Yeah, definitely, you know, it's something that's, we've been working on and, and laboring over for a number of sessions, so yeah, we'll make sure that that gets through as far as what we're going to have on our next agenda and the importance of it. So, any other questions? Adjourn. Huh?
8:42.
8:43.